No.
Wait, what?
I know.
You can run the gear and they'll come. You know, that actually keeps the peace. Even mine.
Eight fifty-nine.
My one voice thing.
Good morning. We are going to convene the November fourth, twenty twenty-five Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number two, amendments to the agenda. I did not see any. One last look to make sure there wasn't any last minute. There are none, so they will stand as distributed. Item number three, approving the minutes of the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five board meeting minutes, which also we've had distributed previously in our packets. Are there any changes or what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I will move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion and a couple seconds. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Item number four, new employee welcome. Why don't you guys make your way to the podium. Introduce yourself. We had a, we met previously before the board meeting just to have a little chit chat. So just give us your name, where you're working, not currently here in the county, what area, maybe where you came from, and a fun fact or interesting fact that is up to you.
I'm Niva. I work for the libraries as a library associate at New Prague and Elko. And I have a Great Pyrenees as my fun fact.
Wow.
A hundred pounds.
Wow, yeah, good. Welcome.
I'm Amanda. I'm a nine-one-one dispatcher. I born and raised in Scott County, and my fun fact is I have a fourteen-year-old dog.
Wow, nice, nice. We had a couple dispatchers and I said, I hope I never talk to you.
I'm Kai Fritch. I work for Environmental Services. Been here about two months now. Fun fact is I play rugby with Mankato Marauders.
Oh.
They're out of Mankato, yeah. Played for about nine years and been in eleven states and played.
We're gonna go talk to the Capitol. We might bring you with us.
Yeah.
My name is Jessica. I'm a dispatcher. I just moved up here from Iowa six months ago. I live in Shakopino. And fun fact, I have nine brothers and sisters.
Wow, nice, nice. And we had a few dispatchers and I also said, very nice people. I hope I never talk to you. On the phone anyway, right?
My name is Cindy. I'm also a dispatcher with the sheriff's office. I live in Lakeville. And then my fun fact is I go kayaking a lot and I've been trying to hit a new lake, which is kind of hard to do in this state, but I'm getting there.
It's a long list. It's a long list. Keep us, keep us up to date with how that list is going. Welcome.
I'm Abby. I'm with Scott County Community Corrections. I'm an assistant probation officer. My fun fact is we adopted, my husband and I adopted a puppy a month ago. Lab, German Shepherd.
Wow.
Sure, yeah.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Brooke and I work in employee relations as an HR business partner. And my fun-filled fact is my husband and I have a very hefty goal of hitting all the national parks at some point in our lifetime and as well as all the state parks in Minnesota.
Oh, boy.
Doing the passport, yeah.
Hidden Spears right there. I don't have any stickers around the, I don't see the water bottle over there, but.
She's, she's hit everyone's except Alaska, right?
Oh, no, well. Have you? Here we go. Everyone.
Yeah, so we've, we've hit all the state parks twice and then the passport and hiking club and then the lower forty-eight Hawaii and we've hit five out of eight in Alaska. But you have to remember Samoa and the Virgin Islands, so they're a little tougher to get to. They're a retirement project.
That is, that is impressive, but welcome to all of our new hires. Again, thank you for choosing public service and really appreciate you as being the hands and feet of county, Scott County government. So. I don't know, I'm looking at Jen in the back through the back window. I think you are now going to your, at least the new hires, new employees are going on your bus tour, so thank you again and.
Take care of Jen out there.
Yes, yes. She looks nervous. She looks nervous. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item number five, one of my favorite spots on the agenda, recognition of interested citizens where anybody can come talk to the board about anything that is not on the agenda for up to five minutes. So. Is there anyone that would like to? Welcome. Come on up. Give us your name and address for the record. Welcome.
My name is Jeff Bolt, fourteen oh one here in court. Would just give a, like to give a little update on a proposed road the county is looking at going through our property. Connecting Wynette Acres and Wood Duck Trails. Still wanna remind you all that we're very much opposed to that and to date we have a hundred and eighty signatures from the neighborhoods of Timber Trails, Wynette Acres and Valley Cross, Valley Creek Crossing Two. All opposed to it. We don't want the road through our property. They don't want their neighborhoods disrupted with more traffic. And we don't want taxpayer money to go towards us. Can I leave this with somebody for the record?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for taking advantage of this opportunity, so thank you. Anyone else for interested citizen? Oh, yeah, Kara, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kara Madison, the volunteer coordinator here at Scott County, and I'm here for kind of a quarterly update on the volunteer program recruitment. And there are two areas right now that I am heavily recruiting for. First is our advisory boards and commissions. So as you know, we'll be meeting later in the month to look at that list. We've got eleven applications at this point for some open seats. So that is good. We've still got applications coming in. Last night I had three come in, so that's good, exciting to see. So that information will be on your desk this week. So you can start reviewing applications and you'll know where there are open seats. The other area that we are looking for volunteers at, as we've all been discussing here, the issues with SNAP with the government. We do have a call out to our volunteers currently, anybody who's interested in helping at any of the food shelves. Also, anybody who is interested at helping any, at any of the food distribution programs that are out there. And then, as you know, Scott County has a site that they are working with, liftup.com. So they are also looking for volunteers, so we're kind of working together to share those that are interested. And we will hopefully get a good group of volunteers to help out in areas that we need for this situation. That's all I have for you today.
Great, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
I have a question. I have a question, Kara.
Oh, there she, yep, look at, yeah, I was reeling you back in, reeling you back in.
Yes.
I was asked about the libraries and what volunteer opportunities are there. And somebody was looking for a list of what are the needs at the library system and if they can find that someplace other than just filling out the application.
So we don't currently have a list. I mean, we have two specific job descriptions for library assistant or library computer techs. Those are two areas that we're always looking for individuals in. We are working, I am working currently with the libraries. We're looking at starting a tutoring program in some of the libraries. So we've got some ideas where we want people to be able to help. I will tell you, in the world of volunteering, or at least here, that is the number one request I get is people want to help in the libraries. As soon as they retire, I get all sorts of applications. We just don't have all the openings available, so we're really trying to find out and be very strategic in our placement of those volunteers. So if that individual wants to reach out to me directly, I can get a little more information from them, see maybe they have a specialty that we're not thinking about, that we could go ahead and see if we can do a placement in one of the libraries.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right.
Any other questions? All right, any other interested citizens? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the, I know number six, consent agenda. These are the nine options or nine items that will pass in one motion. Item six point one, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one nine six, certifying final approved appraised values and authorizing acquisition by eminent domain proceedings for the county highway seventeen trail south of county highway sixteen. Six point two, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two three five, approving the final plat of Red Rock Industrial Park. Demcon Companies LLC applicant and Demcon Properties LLC and Demcon Landfill LLC property owners. Six point three, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two four three, authorizing entering an amendment to the Women, Infants and Children Nutritional Program Contract, the WIC. Six point four, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two four five, authorizing final payment to safety signs for the twenty twenty-five county highway sign replacement project. Six point five, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two four six, authorizing final payment to Gopher State Seal Coat Inc. for the twenty twenty-five trail preventative maintenance project. Six point six, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two four nine, authorizing the purchase of property at one seven nine eight one Marshall Road in Spring Lake Township. Six point seven, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two five two, authorizing application for a grant to prepare for the reentry, demonstration waiver, and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Services. Six point eight, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two five nine, submitting comments on the lower Minnesota River watershed district's finding and, and order. Authorizing construction sale of project bonds for capital improvement project, area number three, Minnesota River, Riverbank Stabilization Project. Six point nine, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the nine items on consent this morning. Members, what is your, I see two greens.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I have one comment I wanna make, but is there any further discussion before I?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
I wanna thank the board for, hopefully, I guess we haven't voted yet, but the support of the six point eight, which is the comments to the lower Minnesota River watershed district in the bonding, public hearing that they're holding tomorrow. So thank you.
Nice, thanks for representing. I just wanted to make a comment on six point one. You know, everyone knows my feelings on eminent domain, even though it's constitutional. In, in the packet for the request for board action, it kind of calls out the why. There's two parcels on seventeen across from the hospital. Just note at the bottom, one owner, owner of one parcel has verbally agreed to voluntarily sell the property in its entirety. The second owner, the lower part of that, on the second parcel, the owner has indicated interest in a voluntary sale of the entire property, but there's a conflict of interest between the owner and the county, so it precludes us from direct negotiations. I just wanna bring that up because it's seventeen, an eminent domain, and we just had interested citizens on that to make sure that everyone knows the what, where and why, and that's, that's the reason, so.
Just to add to that, Mr. Chair, those are the two parcels that, like ten or eleven years ago when we updated that intersection, we decided to leave those because they weren't interested in selling. We have seen more and more conflicts of folks wanting to use that trail, and so it was to move the trail forward. But we've also kept funding in there to acquire those in the tip every year annually since then. And so when they became willing sellers, it was, it's a good thing. We can now move that trail forward and we can work with the city on that excess property eventually, so. It'll be a positive for access on county highway seventeen.
And had this conflict not existed, it likely would have just been a willing participant and.
Correct, they're a willing seller, but we have to do it per.
Yep.
Requirements.
Yep. Any other discussion on consent agenda? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, consent passes. Moving on to item number seven, seven point one, adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two five five, recognizing November fourth to the eleventh, twenty twenty-five as Operation Green Light to shine a light of hope and support for veterans. You probably notice our building is lit in green. Derek, come on up. Good morning. You got a, you got a busy morning. Thanks for taking some time to come talk to us.
It's my pleasure and yes, it is a busy day here, so. I am here to read resolution twenty twenty-five dash two two five, recognizing November fourth through eleventh, twenty twenty-five as Operation Green Light to shine a light of hope and support for veterans. Whereas, the residents of Scott County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And, whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And, whereas, Scott County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And, whereas, veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, VFWs, other veterans organizations, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow, and, sorry, fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And, whereas, approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And, whereas, an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And, whereas, studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And, whereas, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service. And, whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And, whereas, Scott County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in and for the county of Scott, Minnesota, with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Scott County hereby declares November fourth through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, a time to salute and honor the services, uh, service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved, in observance of Operation Green Light, Scott County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their home or place of business during the week of Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a good reminder for all kinds of things for, I'm glad we're not a country that forgets our veterans. And it's a reminder for me to make sure I get my Wi-Fi bulbs back to green, so. Members, any comments? Any for Derek? Or we will entertain this resolution.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two five five, and thank you, Derek, for your service and for bringing this forward.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, approve. Now, now where are you gonna be running off to? Give us a little update on that.
The most nerve-wracking part of the day is next. I have to go put a three-valle and gat of gravy or vat of gravy in my car and drive as slowly and motionlessly as possible, the ten, twelve blocks, whatever it is to get back here, so. If I can go the whole day without three gallons of gravy in my car, I will be happy.
Nice, good for you.
And if there's no gravy at lunch, then you know what happened.
Yeah, we don't wanna have that happen. I've been told we need to take a minor, hopefully minors, short recess because the livestream is having some issues. Is that right?
Yeah.
So we're gonna take a brief recess. I'm not sure when that went down, but it didn't ever start. I got a text from a guy. Chris Costick from Credit River. Shoot. Okay. I will see, we'll see. You're just that drug problem. You're driving me to all those meetings. But, we're good. Okay, we are back on live. All right, thank you for that brief recess, for a little technology reset. We had completed item seven point one, Operation Green Light. I don't know how much was caught on livestream. So we're gonna move on to item number eight point one to receive a financial update for Q three, twenty twenty-five. Steve Jones, welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to go through the third quarter.
Financial results? Oh, are we looking for a screen still? Working on a screen. Just bring us some good news. That's what we want. We want some.
On the community response in regards to that, and then we do have two action items for you. One in regards to $100,000 for food shelves. And another is, um, two letters, actually, one to our Scott County federal and the other to our state delegation. So in terms of SNAP, for people that are less familiar with this, uh, this is a benefit that is given to individuals that qualify, that apply and qualify due to being low income. Uh, we have approximately 5,700 people in Scott County that receive SNAP. That is about 6,200 a month, and we point that out just because there is kind of a, a natural cycle. People apply, they get jobs, they come off. There is, um, kind of a, a pattern of people that move in and out. It's not a stagnant group. Um, there are about seven, or 2,700 households. And off to the left, you can see how that works out by city. It is a little proportional due to our population on those that receive it. So it, it does really kind of cut across our entire county. When looking at the characteristics of those that receive SNAP, we have 42% that are children, 19 that are elderly, 13% that are disabled. And so really 74% are, um, either children, elderly, or disabled individuals. So really some of our most vulnerable low-income individuals that live within Scott County. When looking at WIC, um, we actually just received information. It first came out yesterday from the National WIC Association that there was an additional 450 million that was found, um, from, at the federal level that was going to be issued to states. We just received information that Minnesota is going to receive 3.47 million for food and 1.9 million for administration of the WIC program. So we believe that will get us at least until mid-December, maybe late December, but I think we can say mid-December for both services to recipients and also for the administration of our programming. Uh, that is about 2,000 individuals that utilize the WIC program, and that is about 405 infants. And I, I, we highlight the infants because that was of most concern as we looked at having this shut down, um, and not having to have funding there, but just looking at how to, um, support formula and diapers and, and things that we know are really costly, but, um, really critical to families. Again, when looking at the, the fiscal impact, we can look at it from an individual county and statewide level. So, um, individually for WIC, you, people can get anywhere about 87 to $230. It really depends on the age of their child. We know infants get more, we know that they're more expensive. Um, and then to, um, you know, as their children get a little older, that, that benefit amount decreases. We have the maximum amount per household highlighted. Um, we do take their income into consideration when evaluating what their monthly benefits are. So the maximum amount for an individual is almost $300 a month, and then that goes up by household size. Uh, for county, as you can see within this graph here, uh, we are running out of almost about a million dollars a month with SNAP and WIC that is paid, um, from the state to participants for the benefits that they receive. And so it's about $70 million a month. The state of Minnesota runs just for the SNAP program. I don't have that number for the WIC program. But as you can see, it's a pretty big gap to fill when there is a, a pause in funding. So where do we sit today? I think we had originally gotten this communication on October 14th that potentially November payments were going to be in jeopardy. Uh, that was confirmed on communication from the Department of Children, Youth, and Families from the USDA on October 24th, that all benefits would be suspended until further notice. They also said that, uh, they would not be reimbursing states to supply SNAP benefits, um, or use their own state money to supply SNAP benefits in the short term. So that, I, I believe is the, why, uh, we haven't seen the state of Minnesota move in that direction. If there was any benefits that were remaining on cards, people could continue to use those. And we, as the county, are still, um, being told that we can process applications. Last Monday, the Walz administration did allocate $4 million. Uh, it was actually money that was from our family's first programming that was reallocated and moved towards food. Um, and then on Friday, the federal judge did say that SNAP was an essential service and that they could use, uh, emergency funding. There's about $5 million in a SNAP emergency fund. Uh, and we received a notification from DCYF late yesterday saying that, um, DCYF did communicate to the state that those funds would be utilized, and we believe that it covers about half the normal benefits. And so what we don't know is when that will be issued, but it won't be the full amount for individuals. But we do expect further communication today, um, on when that might, might be.
Just a question.
Good.
I read some articles that relate to that, um, that it would be half and that it might be slow with being released. Apparently some recalibration of the technology, you know, you're going to get half, you know. Does your technology support how to divide the half up? Or, so apparently there was some tweaking of stuff that needs to be done in relationship. Is that, do you, are you aware of that kind of dynamic or?
Yeah, I, I, not that specific piece, but that doesn't surprise me. So even when we received the initial communication on, on October fif- 14th, um, they had to try to reprogram our state systems to, um, allow us to still process but not issue. And it's not, I think, as we've talked about, our state systems aren't necessarily nimble and agile. And so, um, I, I think it doesn't surprise me that there's a challenge in trying to figure out how to, um, recalibrate, as you had stated. So, yeah, it, it won't be, it's not as easy as push a button and send money out the door. Are there other program questions?
Barb, sometimes you see questions around who's eligible for SNAP versus WIC. Who is eligible to receive SNAP? What are the thresholds and those types of things that are required?
Yeah, it, it is based off of income. And it is, and I, I, I should write that number up here. I want to say it's 165% of poverty, um, for the SNAP program, but can, um, double-check that and, and let you know. In addition to that, um, you do have to be in the U.S. legally in order to, um, receive benefits. But SNAP is an entitlement, so if you qualify based off of, um, being able to establish residency and also income levels, then you would qualify for that. Similar to like Medicare or Medicaid, um, where if you meet certain, certain, certain thresholds, you, um, as a U.S. citizen would get that benefit.
One more. I also read, sorry, that, uh, new applicant applicants might not be able to be applying this limited half, receiving half scenario. Is that, did you hear something like that or?
We haven't heard that instruction yet. Um, we have been told that people can continue to apply. Um, so if that changes, though, we could get, we would definitely want to get communication out on our website regarding that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think the resolution actually talks about, or the, the RBA, that we've been directed to continue to take applications for SNAP, correct? From the state and the federal government?
Right, correct. So that, yeah, so if there was something different within, um, a contingency from the USDA, then we would want to look at that.
And now with this new wrinkle, um, how do we look to, I mean, the $100,000? Are we, how is that going to be dispersed with partial funding, maybe coming, maybe not? Timelines, what might that look like?
So, Mr. Chairman, we decided not to go the same route as like Washington County, who dedicated so much to certain, um, food shelves based on, and Jake's going to talk about what we learned last week. But we decided to wait and have requests come in as documented needs were there, and then to have that reviewed and put small contracts together stipulating what those dollars could be used on. And so we're still recommending that we move forward with that. But again, it would be on a request needed, it wouldn't automatically go out.
Good, and this, you know, as always, you know, we're, we're, we're coming here to do a, a board meeting, but so many of these things have been workshop. We talked about this, uh, a week or so ago, or whatever it was. But, you know, it's ever-changing, um, not only this, but all, of kinds of other things. So just curious how that was going to be looked at as, as new news came in. Because it's also important that, you know, it goes to the people that need it the most, um, which you, you know, with the SNAP and WIC, they're coming to you, they have to meet certain criteria. And not the people that need, are not in needed food shelves, that's obviously not the case. But how do you discern the most needy when you have such limited funds? So that's, that's good to hear that.
And before I turn it over to Jake, I just want to, um, first of all, want to thank our staff. I think within, um, Health and Human Services and especially within, um, Economic Assistance, they've been really receiving daily updates and, um, really a lot of interested, like what's going to happen to me now, questions. And so appreciate them trying to just kind of hold and be the boots on the ground to try to figure this out. In addition to that, I will thank Jake and his team, um, for trying to, and he'll talk a little bit about the community response with this. I think we're very fortunate to have, um, community and internally be able to work together. And in the spirit of that, uh, I think between, um, TES and Health and Human Services, um, and Tony Winicki and also Scott Haas, we're meeting every other day at 7:30 in the morning just to do a status update on this. We haven't, um, initiated a full incident command. Some counties have, but we thought, uh, we already have a tight network of communication. We'll utilize that at this point, so.
Great, thank you for that, yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping that this money would be used in a, um, something. Permanently. Okay, I'm hoping that this money would be used in a targeted fashion with the food shelves. I, I, obviously we're aware of the fact that there are certain categories that they're maybe always short of, like formula, or they might have abundance of canned goods, but no formula. Stuff like that, I'm hoping will target what is the, the big gaps that they usually run out of.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point, and that may be a good time to hand it over to Jake, and he can tell you a little bit about, um, those conversations we've been having.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Jake Gruising, Transformation Enterprise Services Director. So in addition to the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, sort of pre-incident command structure Barb mentioned, we have a weekly check-in with our food shelves, the five food shelves in Scott County. We had our first one at 7:30 this morning. And that was, that was on top of mind for the food shelves was what is the right place to target the resources? We have collectively the resources we may receive from the community and potentially from the county board. And, um, a special focus and interest on the, the families that may be impacted by WIC benefits. If we could stretch this out into December and folks do need formula, they do need baby food, that was a priority for the five food shelves. At this point, um, I, I think this, it's fair to, to say, to summarize for the three that were represented on the call, Jordan Food Shelf, uh, Food Shelf in New Prague, and the CAP Agency, that they saw a little uptick over the weekend, but they didn't, they didn't categorize it as crazy or outside the norm. And they really feel like they, they're not going to have a sense of what this will look like for another week or two. They'll keep monitoring the, the flow and the calls they're getting. But all three of them wanted to prioritize making sure infants had, had the resources they need and parents had the resources to take care of them going forward.
Good, that's good.
I will, uh, just reiterate, or Barb just close her section with gratitude to our, our staff and Health and Human Services, Transformation Enterprise Services. So last Wednesday, we hosted a community roundtable with faith partners, nonprofits, uh, school districts, townships, really opened it to anybody who was willing to take the time to show up on a Wednesday afternoon at 3 o'clock. Um, so gratitude to our staff for pulling it together. We had representatives, 43 external organizations represented. Some of them, most of them, really cold called either on Friday afternoon, Monday, Tuesday afternoon, 24 hours before the event, we're still trying to get in touch with people. And I'm going to, I'll, I'll promise to do it quickly. But I think it's, I think it's worth having on the record the Scott County organizations that, uh, made time to show up for that. So some not even in Scott County. 360 communities, ALOS, Bell Plain Food Shelf, Bethesda Church, Calvary Church, CAP Agency, Carver County Public Health, Church of St. Wentz, City of Prior Lake, Community Resource Center, FISH, Freedens Evangelical Lutheran Church, Friendship Church, Heart, Ozana Church, Hy-Vee Savage, Jordan Food Shelf, Just Serve, Lift Up, Mi Casa, Ministerios Rey de Reyes, Minnesota House of Representatives, New Creation Lutheran Church, New Spirit United Church of Christ, Nueva Vida Church, Peace Center New Prague, Prior Lake News Compass, Prior Lake Savage Optimists, Prior Lake Chamber, Resonate Community Church, River Valley Church, Sand Creek Baptist Church, Sand Creek Township, Shakopee School, Shepherd of the Lake Church, Shakopee Midwakton Sioux Community, St. Francis Alina, St. John the Baptist, St. John's Evangelical Lutheran Church, and the Food Group, in addition to Scott County staff.
Nice.
So I, I don't think we can extend enough gratitude to them, and most of them have been in communication with Michael Bergstrom, our community engagement manager, since the roundtable, wanting the most up-to-date information, wanting to know where they can direct their donations. And one theme, we heard it, Barb and I heard it this morning from the food shelves, that sort of called back a theme from Wednesday's roundtable, which was, uh, a lot of us experience abundance here in Scott County. We, we have more than we need. There are a lot of people in our communities who don't have enough, and if the shutdown continues, that population will grow. Where can, where can I direct my personal or my organizational abundance, um, so that it goes to the right place? Even this morning from the food shelves, we had CAP and Jordan and New Prague going back and forth on, well, we have some extra of this, could we deliver that to CAP so you guys to distribute it? CAP saying, we have a little bit extra, could we push that out to the other food shelves? So this, the shared resources to reduce the scarcity that people may be experiencing, and so that those gifts can keep moving through the community. I think for a lot of us who are, uh, engaged in this, it's, it's why, this is part of why we're engaged in it. So inspiring work from the community. Uh, so we have the weekly check-in, I hit that. Michael and I are in the process of standing up a weekly meeting with the faith partners as well. We're aiming to have the first one on Thursday morning at 7:30. So five days a week, we'll have regular check-ins with the food shelves, the faith partners, and then our county staff here. And a special call out to, to Lift, Lift Up and Just Serve, um, two nonprofit organizations. Lift Up in particular, Shane O'Rourke, a Jordan resident, grew up in Prior Lake. He attended the roundtable and came over at the end of the conversation about 5 o'clock and said, hey, I could, if, if this helps, I can stand up a website that's sort of a central location for donations to the five food shelves. I can have that done in 24 hours. He and his team had it done in 24 hours. It was our, it was sort of me slowing down the process, making sure we wanted to get the language right, that delayed it to, I think, about 36 hours after the roundtable. We communicated that back to the attendees, that they could share the link to that site, share that information through their networks and their congregations on Sunday. Uh, this morning, there've been over $1,200 donated through that site alone. We know that folks continue to donate directly to the five food shelves or through Give Minnesota, so. And we heard from, uh, from Jeff Hanson at the CAP Agency this morning that, um, people are giving abundantly right now. So the community is really stepping up to, to try to fill the gap for people.
All right, I can't take it anymore. Like, I love this, this is awesome. This is awesome. I mean, this is, um, I mean, I feel like this county really, I think it's always had, had a heritage and has really sharpened this idea of like bringing the community together. It's almost like the first old thing is the next new thing. The public, the entities, faith, business, individuals, working together to be that social net. It's just a great opportunity. I think this is, these are great opportunities. And I got to tell you, my heart was like slightly divided. I could not be there on that Wednesday, had a once-in-a-lifetime family event take place. And I'm still slightly divided, not much because it was my daughter and it was kind of a big deal. But I am so excited for this, uh, so proud of our people that like get it, like it's not a, hey, what can government do? Not that government's bad, but too much government's a little not-so-great. But trying to bring about real solutions in kind of the old-fashioned way of sorts, people helping people. And we're kind of that, that convener in trying to bring those things together and just, it's just, it's not government-y. I maybe, Webster will put that new word in, I don't know. And so I'm super excited, super proud of, uh, our role in this, and whatever gas we can throw on that fire, um, the better. So, yes.
I do want to add just a couple of things, Commissioner. Barb addressed our staff and TES and HHS, but I also want to acknowledge Barb herself. Anybody that was at District, um, what are we, 10 yesterday? It was Barb's everywhere. Barb's leadership in this has just been phenomenal, but so has the rest of your, um, leadership team at the, uh, cabinet meeting last Friday following this. You had, or the week before, you had different directors stepping up where how could we come up with $100,000 to $200,000 that didn't impact what Steve just showed you? What were things we could do? So we have some creative ideas there. You know, you saw the 3.1 million, but 2.1 of that is, is interest, right? And so the other million dollars is coming from staff and vacancies and things they're doing to save dollars to help for next year, because we know this isn't going to get any, um, easier. And so I, I just want to say thank you to them. But, um, Barb and Jake were, Jake, I'm sure worked most of Wednesday night on this, uh, website with Lift Up. And Barb and Jake were working with me Saturday morning, um, to get these letters right, because it's hard to find letters that fit all five of you, who have different ideas that maybe get the right tone to a state and a federal delegation. And so their leadership has just been outstanding. And so, um, I love where we're going. It meets one of our major value statements about collaboration. I hit on what you talk about there. But also their leadership has been really good. The $100,000 really becomes a backstop, right? That's what it is. It's a backstop if this continues on that we could be support, but the community is stepping up, and that is really, really a good thing.
That's amazing. It's amazing.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to, um, echo what Leslie said, because I think, I think sometimes folks forget, even folks in the community forget that, that you two and, and many of your staff already had packed full, already have packed full jobs. You have things to do every minute of every day and into the evening. These, these really are extra unforeseen things, so. And this is one of many going on right now. So thank you, that doesn't go unnoticed. And, and we need to make sure that, that, uh, you don't drop over during all this and that you get to sleep and eat sometimes. So thank you.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. And, and Mr. Chair, I fully agree, government doesn't need to do anything, but I think this is a perfect example of what government needed to do here, which was convene, that a lot of times our community organizations, our faith communities, they don't have the capacity or the ability to do that type of thing. So this is, in my, my view at least, a very perfect role of government to convene and, and get all these people talking and, and working together. So it, um, it's unfortunate we have to go there, but yes, I'm glad it's working. I, I was on CAP Finance Committee Call yesterday and, and did hear about some significant donations coming in. But also, you know, also a need that because of other funding, they're, they're, you know, I don't want to say laying off people, but reorganizing and, and making sure. And we have those same, I think that's what, what the general public doesn't know. We're really working to make sure that our residents, um, can survive and get the help they need, but we're also taking some hits to budget, because a lot of that federal money that paid us to administer the federal program is not coming in. And these are real employees and real jobs that we and other organizations have, and it does affect our, our budget and our organization and management. But that's true for some of the nonprofits also. There, we're all dealing with that because of the uncertainty. So, thank you.
Well, I mean, there's, I, right, chaos. But in the midst of this chaos, there's opportunity. And it feels like we are working with our community partners, our community, to try to, you know, maximize that. And it's, and hopefully this is something that, because we're about this. We're about hope and transformation, right? What's, what's your first word in your?
Right, transformation.
Transformation. We want to bring about as best we can, lead the horse to water type of thing, about hope and transformation in everything we do. And this is just one of those areas that, um, highlights that area. So it's, it's, I'm very excited about this. Yes?
I was, had the opportunity to sit at the roundtable with Hy-Vee Savage. And those private organizations or businesses that are stepping up, like Shakopee Bowl, that are, that, they don't need us, you know? They, they know what to do and they're, they're, uh, doing what they can.
Awesome.
To support, I think it's just great, so.
Lot of businesses, a lot of people, I mean, there's a lot of people stepping up to get this thing done. And I just, you know, unfortunately it takes these kind of moments of chaos to bring that, not, not bring it up, but heighten it. But hopefully these are opportunities that we can, um, you know, move forward with, with more community engagement and partners that we work with, uh, do the work that need the hands and feet, do the work that needs doing. Great, thank you so much.
I believe Barb is, we have two resolutions here. So Barb is going to read the first one.
All right, we're moving on to 9.2, looking at adopting the resolution. It's not, still 9-1 on the, for the letters? Okay, got it, got it, yep, perfect.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2025-260.
Second.
I got so excited, I was moving on to the letters. All right, we have a motion, a second. Uh, any further discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Now the letters, the letters. You, me, who, you, you, her, you.
Would you like me to read in the resolution? All right. This is, uh, an action asking you to adopt Resolution Number 2025-266, approving the submission of a letter to the Scott County federal and state delegations urging action to minimize impacts of a federal government shutdown on counties and residents, including the continuation of SNAP benefits and payments for administrative processing. Whereas the United States federal government shut down on October 1st, 2025, after lawmakers failed to appropriate funding for fiscal year 2026 or pass a continuing resolution. And whereas the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA, Food and Nutrition Services, notified the Minnesota Department of Children, Youth, and Families, DCYF, that if the federal government shutdown continued into November, there would be insufficient funds to pay November Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program SNAP benefits. And whereas the USDA has directed states to hold the issuance files and delay transmission to state electronic benefit transfer, EBT, vendors until further notice. And whereas in Minnesota, county governments acting as an administrative agent of the state and federal governments accept and process SNAP applications and determine eligibility. And whereas county workers have been directed by the USDA and DCYF to continue to process and determine eligibility for new and existing recipients to ensure benefits will be available as soon as the federal government issues the funds. And whereas SNAP helps more than 440,000 individuals in Minnesota, including roughly 5,700 individuals who reside in Scott County. And whereas SNAP benefits provide roughly $850,000 in monthly food assistance to eligible Scott County households. And whereas food shelves in Scott County and throughout Minnesota are already strained and are anticipating even higher demand if SNAP benefits are not paid to households starting on November 4th, 2025. And whereas the Scott County Board of Commissioners on November 4th, 2025, authorized the emergency use of $100,000 for Scott County food shelves. And whereas the failure of the federal government to maintain essential services during a shutdown places the burden of emergency response on state and local governments, straining already limited resources. And whereas local counties should not need to use local funds to step in to solve state and federal funding shortfalls. And whereas Scott County strongly believes that providing food assistance to eligible county residents is the responsibility of the federal government, which is administered by the states. And whereas due to Minnesota state statutes, those costs are then passed on to the 87 counties and local property tax. And whereas we encourage an immediate resolution to the shutdown and the payment of SNAP and other federal benefits be reinstated as reflected in the attached letters. And whereas Scott County expects that the federal government will reimburse the county for the county's administrative costs for accepting applications and determining eligibility for all work that is done during the federal government shutdown. And whereas counties across Minnesota, including Scott County, are on the front lines of administering human services programs and will bear the operational and financial burden of any disruptions in federal funding or program continuity. And whereas the Scott County Board of Commissioners believes it is imperative to communicate the urgent need for federal and state leaders to take action to prevent or mitigate the impacts. And whereas the state of Minnesota needs to acknowledge its role in meeting these basic needs if the federal shutdown continues. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Scott County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the submission of a letter to the Minnesota Congressional Delegation and State Legislative Delegation for Scott County, urging swift action to ensure the continuation of SNAP benefits and to minimize the impacts of a federal government shutdown on counties and their residents. Be it further resolved that the board chair is authorized to sign and transmit the letters on behalf of the county board.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of 2025-266.
Motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? I will say, um, this is one of those things where many of the systems we deal with, they're not perfect systems. And we also have people in need, so it's time to get this thing figured out. So, um, so I think the letters captured that essence. So motion, second, any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Resolution passes, thank you so much, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item number 10, committee reports and commissioner updates. As always, look down to my right, Commissioner Weckman-Brecke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we had, our last board meeting was October 21st, and we had workshops after that board meeting. On October 22nd, Jake Gruising and I met with Shane O'Rourke of Lift Up, which turned out to be a good meeting. which turned out to be a good meeting because then we were able to involve him and some other things. So, October 22nd also had the state community supervision advisory council meeting. And that day also had a virtual meeting with Representative, Representatives Cagle Berg and Hanson and Lisa Fries and her team to talk about the Highway 13 project legislative ask for this year. On October 23rd, I attended AMC District Eight meeting in Nobles County. Very interesting, after the meeting, we toured. They have a part, it's some, a facility actually connected to their jail and county buildings that was used for other purposes. They've built out some mental health beds that are just opening now to serve several of those counties down there. I just, not many, like five or six beds, but there's nothing like that down there. So it was good to see how they're, they're able to work together and do that because we know there's a need. Also, on the 23rd had the County State Long Term Services and Support Subcommittee. 24th, I was at AMC District Six meeting in Granite Falls. The 27th had Human Services Budget and Federal Changes Steering Committee and AMC Finance Committee Workshop. At least three or four of these groups that you'll hear in my report are all, have all been stood up for state and federal budget changes and, and the work that needs to be done. So, October 20th, we had board workshop. Also had a long-term services and supports advisory subgroup meeting that day. On the 29th, Administrator Leslie Vermillion and I met with the mayor and city administrator of New Prague. As you know, there's been a change in the mayor position there in New Prague. And so it was good to, to, to meet up again with the old mayor, new mayor, Chuck Nicolay, and hear from him. And his goal really in this, in this interim type position is to keep things sailing smoothly. And, and he already has served with these council members. So it just does seem to be going smoothly and, and good. The 29th had Together We Can Steering Committee, also a meeting with our CDA Executive Director and the District One CDA Commissioner about the vacancy in District One. Deanne Crowit has served District One on the CDA for a, a long time and served very well. And so really just, we hadn't had applications yet. So doing some brainstorming about folks that they could reach out to, to make sure we, we get somebody who really cares about housing from District One. October 30th, met with Mark Paul from DemCon, just kind of a touch base meeting about things going on in Louisville Township. October 30th also had the County Court Communications and Policy Committee meeting, Long Term Services and Supports Advisory Council meeting. On October 31st, had a planning meeting. Leslie and I are making a very quick trip to Seattle, I think 36 hours in November for the National Congress of American Indians joining. We were asked by Administrator Red Nicky to join him. Mayor Briggs to put on a workshop about, about scale and, and interactions between the tribe and county. November 3rd had CAP Finance Committee meeting, District 10 meeting, also the Transportation Alliance Annual Meeting. And then last night was Lakeley Township meeting. Thanks to Brad Davis and County Engineer Tony Winicki for attending that meeting. We talked a lot about County Road 51, talked about just planning zoning issues. They were very interested in what's going on with the federal budget and the state and the impacts. So it, yeah, I think we, we chatted with them for a good 45 minutes during their township meeting. So, and Mr. Chair, that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 22nd, we had MMCD, Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. They had a really nice presentation on mosquitoes and what they're doing to limit their effects on us. Then we had, that night I was at Red Oak Elementary in Shakopee. There's a little road over there and it looks like everything will be pretty good there. On the 23rd, we were at the Burnsville Water Plant for a bonding tour to, to get some funds for the Highway 13. That night, Alco New Market had their city council meeting. Everything's pretty good there. On the 24th, went to Lisa Fries' retirement. It's funny because I can't see her here today for the first time.
I know.
Over three years or something. Anyhow. Then on the 27th, had a, a meeting on the phone with NACO. Talked a lot about the SNAP and WIC and, and also the Green Light Program. On the 28th, the workshop. On the 29th, Community Roundtable. And then on the 3rd, yesterday AMC had that little meeting that Barb discussed there, a few issues. And last night Credit River and Cedar Lake had their monthly meetings. That's my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. On October 22nd, I sat in on the MBTA board meeting. October 22nd, I attended the open house for County Road 21 in Southbridge and the new proposed turn lanes on County Road 21. October 23rd, I attended the housing bonding tour for County Road, or not County Road, I guess, it's Highway 13. So it was great to see our house delegation there and showing them, showing the things that have to happen on Highway 13. October 24th was the Dakota Scott Workforce Board. I think we got into a conversation about the federal shutdown and the federal conflicts. And we, I think we also need to really focus on, and I'll bring it up at our next meeting, but, but jobs for people that are being affected by the new regulations or proposed regulations for SNAP and WIC. October 27th was, I had a meeting with Spuck Manager Greg Drunt. And we talked, talked about nuclear energy and what nuclear energy would mean in Shakopee or Scott County. October 27th was the Scott County WPC Board meeting. October 28th was our workshop. October 29th was the Food Roundtable. October 30th was a meeting with the courts and judges. On November 3rd was the AMC District 10 meeting.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Olrich.
Okay, on the 22nd, I attended the Fish Board meeting. We're working on budget. Later that same day, the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority Board meeting. 23rd, the House Bonding Tour. I was particularly pleased with Jess Hansen and her speaking strongly for the Highway 13 project. I think she did a nice job there. 24th, MBTA Finance Committee. And then later that day, Lisa Fries' retirement celebration. 27th, the Transportation Active Working Group for TAB. They have this category called community engagement that's going to have a real key role in active transportation projects and the regional solicitation. Active transportation is bike, pet, and roll. So it's, it's walking, biking, and wheelchair projects. And the measure in community engagement that's troubling, if you kind of win the three measures under that category, if you win the, get high in each one of those categories, you're guaranteed a project, which makes all the other measures irrelevant, which is ridiculous. You know, I said, well, how about if we, you know, why don't we just say if you, if you win the two major criteria under safety, why aren't you guaranteed a project there? I mean, the TAB has been most concerned about deaths and, you know, whether it's pedestrian or highway or biking or, you know, the amount of deaths in the state. Why don't we give that the wild card for safety? I said, I don't support that either. I think the projects all ought to score well in all the categories. Don't make one category a guaranteed wild card, which is, you know, so I'm, I'm really against that. So I think they're going to maybe look more deeply at that. But they're going to follow each other. So if they're going to make it in the regional solicitation, they'll make it in the active transportation category as well, which is a state program. Okay. 28th, County Board Workshop, another finance committee for MBT. And the 29th, Faith Committee Roundtable, which I thought was fabulous to get all those people in the room the same day with very short notice. That was great and, and to, and then convey the problem, the nature of the problem, the nature of the need, all that. The one thing that I, I went away with like, well, we didn't really have strategic initiatives that, okay, the faith community could do these, or these, here's a grab bag or, or a dashboard of options for strategic initiatives in the faith community. Or there was a grocery store there, you know? What would be, what could grocery stores do? Or there was a school district there. What could school districts do? You know, I heard from Ben Bakker that they're doing great things in their school district. Are all the school districts doing that? I mean, it would, you know, I'm just wondering if we, and I was glad to hear also that you're having ongoing conversations, ongoing meetings. Maybe that's all occurring. But I'm just wondering if there would be any need to get subgroups together for strategic initiatives. For example, I know one church, a larger church, and Boy Scout troops do the same thing. I just learned this morning, is they have a plastic bag, you know, with the message of the need and what, what the deal is. And they put it on a door and say, a few days later, we're going to come back and pick up whatever you would like to donate to the food shelf. Well, that's, that's like a strategic thing that, you know, if all the faith communities wanted to do that, or all the youth groups wanted to do that. I don't know. I just, maybe we'd have a dashboard with, with initiatives that could be put into practice. But anyhow, so it was great. I'm just, and it's probably unrealistic to expect on short notice what I'm suggesting, you know, you know? So I get that. But anyhow, but I, I have no criticism. It's fabulous what has been done already. And I thank you for that. The third, another MBTA Management Committee. One thing that's going to be happening with the service provider, you know, Schmitty's and Son are the contracted provider. You know, they drive the buses and they're, they're subcontracted to carry out the work of transporting people. There's going to be a new RFP, you know, every number of years, whether it's three or five years, it's good to get a new RFP and, and seek competitive bids on that. So they're going to be going through a competitive bid process. I asked the question, you know, well, Schmitty's is a local company. Are there other potential RFPs that would also be considered local? And they said yes. And the reason I asked that, I, I place a, a value on being a local company, you know? It's local jobs, it's a local, you know? So, although even a non-local company would still have to hire all positions from the local community. But still, I value that. Okay, later that day, the Scott Carver Mobility Management Board. We received a report on May Mobility in Southwest Transit. And I, I learned that GoMarty in Grand Rapids and May Mobility are the same. GoMarty is just the, the branding name up there for the service. So it's the same exact program. And, you know, up, up in Itasca County, when they did that pilot, it was quite a partnership of, and, you know? But the county was engaged in the partnership too, and the cities were as well. And I think it was 10 or 12 people that contributed to that pilot. And I'm just wondering, in the future, if, you know, with our transportation sales tax, we've had a transit category, small, modest of that, those dollars. I'm just wondering if someday in the future, we might want to participate in autonomous vehicle pilot with, and, yeah, so it's a thought for the future. That's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Going back to 21st, post-board workshop. 22nd, MMCD was talked about. We're still talking about mosquitoes. That particular meeting also talked about TICS and the fact that we are still in a, I hate to say it, the timeline of or TICS are still very active. It's like, what in the world? Then after that, rushed down to the Fish Board meeting back here in Shaco. And then later that evening, open house for 21 in Southbridge. The next morning, met Council Member Delaney for some local Turkish tea in downtown Shaco, just getting to know each other based on that workshop we had a couple of weeks before that. And then that afternoon, in the House Bonding Tour, I think stopped here and then went to 13, so hosted them here and tried to look them all in the eye and talk them, talk to them about Miriam Junction and needs of the county. And we want to be great partners, which I think our body of work shows that. I, I did say, I said, I'm not singling anybody out here. But I, I know sometimes we get labels, the whiny counties were coming. And, and a certain Brad, just a certain Brad was changing the, looked at, oh, he's talking about me. So A, thank you for both the blue and the red team that shows up and we can have these conversations and have good relationships. So there can be some very serious conversations and some also some good natured ribbing along the way as well. So, and then it sounds like they had a great stop at 13. So House Bonding Tour, thank you for making a stop here and considering Scott County. Let's see here, then 24th, Lisa Fries. I know, I mean, just look, check the room. Is she, is she on one of these cameras up here? She's probably like long gone, right? She's in some park someplace. She's North Shore Retirement. It is, it is odd you have some of these retirements. And I've mentioned it before, it's kind of like a Sasquatch. You hear about it, but you never see them. And you hear about their retirement, you think it's never coming, and now she's not here. So, we already miss you, Lisa. 27th, I had the Community Health Improvement Committee. That was a call and then I popped out a little bit early to run over to the Vicky Carlson Retirement. And if you know Vicky Carlson, it was a very spirited, very upbeat, very energetic. I walked in and Judge Lennon was kind of doing a, a little bit of a program or whatever. And it was, it was a lot of fun. She's very excited and rightfully so. So she's ready for the next chapter. And the next chapter, better look out, whatever that is, better look out. 10:28, Board Workshop, 10:29. I'm mentioning the Faith Roundtable. I missed it. There was only one thing that was going to keep me from that, and it kept me from that. So, but I, I do see this as an opportunity. And this was an immediate need. And we assembled these people because of the work that we've done before and the work that they want to do. And I'm excited to see some of these next steps that I think will come out of this. You know, we had a roundtable, what, I'm looking at Jake, three years ago was the first one. This is technically the second. The first was a big lift with housing. Took a while to digest all of that. And now these are, these are big needs, but I don't want to say not a heavy lift, but not like housing. So I'm really anxious to see how county is convenor, a big believer in that. Again, first old thing, community helping community becoming the next new thing and how we can foster that. I'm super excited about that. And then 11:03, AMC District 10, really excited. I, I've mentioned this, boy, I'm going to say this publicly. I mentioned this at the AMC Board meeting that I, you know, some of you may not, some of you may know, some of you may not know, I have a drug problem. I've been drugged at AMC meeting by my colleague. So let me be clear, I don't have like a pharmaceutical drug problem. Being drugged AMC.
Drugged isn't dragged.
Yes, drug isn't dragged. Thank you. Just in case, right? But it does seem like the temperature's going up in a good way of enough. People are starting to like, golly, like enough is enough. Like I'm, we're sick and tired of being sick and tired. We're just like, yes, let's, let's, let's collectively push and get some of these things changed that need to change. This is, we all know that the path that we're on is not sustainable. And I do believe in 87 counties, all of those different counties, different administrators, different commissioners, different staff. And we all have our own, I mentioned it yesterday, we all have our own hobby horses. We all have our own ideologies. We all have our own personal opinions and viewpoints. But some of these things are seemingly bubbling to the surface and seemingly getting people's attention that we might be able to form a tip of a spear and actually do some really good work. Not that good work isn't happening, but to make some real significant change in the state that impacts all of us in ways that lower the cost of government, get need to where it needs to be done in a way that makes a lot of sense. So, thank you for dragging me. That is the drug problem. So that was, that was yesterday. And then earlier this morning, we had a new employee welcome. So with that, that ends my report. Look down to my left, County Administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick updates. Tomorrow, the Metro Administrators do meet. It was nice to hear Ling and Heidi yesterday speak up on their concerns about some of this. They're in the number two and three largest counties in the state, so that was encouraging. But we do meet tomorrow. And we are meeting to talk about armor and some draft legislation on the safety systems in the state of Minnesota. Commissioner Fernando spoke about it yesterday. You've been a big pusher, the two of you coming together, got this on our agenda. Jill will be there from the MESB. Jake and Scott Haas drafted some language that then Jill edited. And that's gone out to the counties for review and for folks to take a look at. As Representative Steer has asked for some draft language to bring forward for next session to start to take a look at this. And then, secondly, the Hennepin County, just a quick update on our LETG, P S, Public Safety Information System update. We continue to work through the draft and the governance. I think we made some headway this last week when it went from Hennepin and partner agencies to we're all when it went from Hennepin and partner agencies to we're all partner agencies. And then if Hennepin provides something, that should be called out as a cost share. That was a big step forward. Um, we're still optimistic for second quarter of twenty twenty-six, um, but getting, uh, Central Square, uh, to move forward has been a little bit difficult from a project management standpoint as well. So, we continue to work through that. I'm optimistic, um, that that will move forward. At least two of us will be on the same system, hopefully by the middle of year twenty twenty-six.
So, I just, I want to go back and revisit the MSB, because are you saying that, you know, with Chair Fernando, myself, that you can have birds of different feathers that can come together for common, common good?
Uh, yeah, I would say you're about a hundred eighty degrees apart on lots of things. But when you, uh, take a look at how can we communicate better, how can we be more efficient, what should be a state system versus a local system because the entire state of Minnesota uses it, I think you are perfectly aligned.
So, you're saying there's a chance. All right. Uh, looking down to my right, County Attorney.
Mr. Chair, we do not need to meet.
All right, great, awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, with that, I will look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. (knocking) Oh, I forgot my normal workshop message. For anyone that cares, we are